Good afternoon. Thank you for taking the time to join us. I think some other people will be coming in and joining us on the way. But we're going to go ahead and get started. So without further ado, DJ, why don't you take us away?
Hey, well, thank you guys very much for joining us today. So I'm DJ Muller, CEO of WebLink. You probably have seen me at trade shows, at the conferences, and regional training events. So it's great for you to join us today. Really appreciate it. We thought it would be kind of fun to do a town hall meeting. You probably heard the news that MemberClicks and WebLink have joined forces. So extremely excited about that. And we just really wanted to address you directly and give you an opportunity to ask some questions as well. So I thought it'd be kind of fun to kind of tell you how this all came about. If you've known WebLink for a while, you know that we really, really focus on taking care of our customers and making sure that we really have the best-in-class solution to really help you succeed and engage your members, help them to retain, and to really just do an excellent job of serving your constituents. So over the last few years, what I've really been doing as the CEO of WebLink is actually out looking for additional investment to help us grow. We've had some great owners in the past, but they are small. They really haven't had the ability to help us get to the next level. Additionally, we've had been approached by a lot of people that want to consolidate in the industry as well. But I'm very protective of our culture, and I think specifically one of the things that I want to do is make sure that that doesn't go away. And I think one of the things that makes companies very successful are the ones that put their customers first and really serve them, and that really enables high-powered growth. So how I got in touch with Mark was actually through the process of looking for new investors. Our investment banker who was representing us said, hey, have you ever met Mark Sedgley from MemberClicks? And I'd heard about him. And he said, you know what? You should really talk to him because you guys, your values are the same, and you guys really, you speak a lot of the same language. And I think it'd be really interesting for you guys to get to know each other. So I said, sure, that'll be great. I was actually, I remember I was overlooking the lake in Walker, Minnesota on my 23rd wedding anniversary. And in the morning, I got this call from this crazy guy right here. And he started talking about, hey, you know, Matt told us we should get together. I just don't know much about you and vice versa. And we just started talking and just frankly, just hit it off. And I think, you know, life's about relationships. And one of the things that I just really loved, I remember went back in with, to my wife, and I told her, I have no idea who I just got off the phone with, but I really liked the guys. And they just shared values, same passion for the customers. I think that was really struck me was it's all about the people and really take care of the people, get great people, enable them to serve the customers. So long story short, that was in June. And the more and more we talked, the more it made sense for us to kind of strategically just to come together. And I think this is a case where one and one makes five. And so we've joined forces with MemberClicks. And the great thing is, is they're enabling us to do exactly what I was out looking for, which is to really accelerate the pace at which we are driving more value for you, our customers. So that means additional investment in the product. So we've made a lot of progress, good progress in the last few years, but we really want to go faster. So just by illustration, we had one product manager, now we have five product managers. So it's really exciting for us. One of the other great things about MemberClicks, if you're familiar with them, is they really, or we, really accelerate at ease of use. So if you've seen their product, it is awesome. It is very intuitive, very easy. So as you think about applying some of that knowledge and that expertise to the WebLink product, which is very powerful, but admittedly, there are certain areas that could be a lot more intuitive and easier to use. We're really excited. And so very honored to join forces and really good to be here with Mark and be a part of the MemberClicks family.
Awesome. So with that, turn it over to Mark. Nice. Well, I can't say enough for DJ and the WebLink team, our team now, and the experience that I've had thus far. So we wanted to take an opportunity because I thought it would make a lot of sense, and DJ felt the same way, to actually share what MemberClicks is all about. Just context creates clarity, in my experience. And so what we're going to do is, I'm going to share some slides with you, and we're going to walk through them together. And it's going to be equal parts like, here's what MemberClicks is all about, and it'll speak to some of the things that DJ mentioned in terms of shared values and mission, which I think at the crux of it all, values and mission is really what drives us. And it's why we do what we do, right? I think also too, we're going to take this opportunity to kind of cast a vision for, you know, where we're going and why we want to do this together. And I think the last component is to answer your questions. We've got a lot of questions from the customers about the announcements of this. Of course, there's chatter in the marketplace. There always is when something like this happens. And we just want to create an opportunity to have a window in, you know, get a look behind the scenes as to what's going on, and also for us to kind of hear your voice and share with you and just create a line of communication. So I cannot tell you how much I appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule because I know you're all busy. Typically, if you're like, you know, many of the associations and chambers out there, you're, you don't have enough time, you don't have enough bandwidth, you're wearing a lot of different hats. And so it means a lot to us that you're taking time out of your day to go through this with us. So let's just talk a little bit about what this means. So now we're one company with three solutions, with almost 3,000 customers. By the end of the year, we'll probably be close to that 3,000 customer mark. It's a lot of customers. And the three solutions we provide are ePlay, which is a standalone event registration software that, you know, for those one-off foundation events or nonprofit events, or you just really want to kind of take your conference event registration to the next level and keep it independent, that's what ePlay is all about. You know, they have north of 400 customers, they're based in Canada, so they can handle Canadian taxes and things like that very well. And then you have the WebLink product line, which is really designed to serve those chambers and trade and business organizations really well, you know, with the deep financial integrations and the org-to-org relationships, and really solid data schemas and reporting and querying and all the things that go along with that. And then you have the MemberClicks product line, which is designed to, you know, serve the small professional association, small trades as well. And as we come together to serve this marketplace that we love, one of the things that became really clear to us is that these three products are very complementary. And they're complementary in a lot of different ways. Like if you think of small chambers and small associations from a staff-size perspective or from a budget-size perspective, you know, a lot of times when I go out to trade shows, I have a sign up that says, are you a small staff organization? And inevitably, almost everybody that walks by says, yes, I am. And when you dig a little deeper, it's like, I have 150 people on staff. And I'm like, no, that's not the definition of a small staff organization. What we think typically is, you know, 30 staff or less, 20 staff or less, 10 staff or less. If you think about organizations that size, now, of course, MemberClicks serves some customers that are more than that. So does WebLink, so does ePlay. But the majority of our customers would fall kind of in that small to mid-size range. But if you think about the different dynamics at play for a five-person staff organization or a 250,000 annual budget organization versus a $3 million, 25-staff organization, their needs from a software perspective are very different. They still have the same desires. They technically, you know, typically don't have a lot of like technological resources available to them on staff, so they're leaning on their software partner, provider to be a partner. And they have a lot of the same kind of needs. Different in terms of delivery, however, the genesis of them is all the same. Help me do my job better, help me accomplish my mission for my members, and help me do it in a more efficient way. That's what all of our software tools do. So we saw a huge opportunity to kind of buck the trend of what we were seeing in the marketplace today where you're seeing a lot of consolidation that, you know, organizations are trying to go from the very smallest association to, you know, the American Cancer Societies of the world, right? We decided, let's just do what we do really well. Let's stay focused on the needs of those organizations that typically are understaffed. They typically need a whole lot of partnership from the software perspective. They need a lot of equipping and empowering organizationally from their technology. And that's what we like to do. And, you know, it's kind of part of who we are. And if you think about it, it was one company and three products, and WebLink coming together with MemberClicks, it just made sense because both of us were going to be able to kind of move the ball down the field faster for lack of analogies, right? And I want you to kind of know what our collective mission is. Our collective mission is to empower member-based organizations to thrive through refreshing technology and a heart for service. Now, so many words kind of pop out in that mission for me personally, which is empowering organizations to thrive through refreshing technology and a heart for service. When DJ and I came together and started chatting through kind of like, here's what my vision is for my company and what his vision was for his company, and, you know, the mutual kind of goals that we were trying to accomplish separately, we started talking about our mission. And when we did that, it became clear we were both trying to accomplish the same mission. We were saying it a little differently, of course. We have very different styles, as you can see, right? But what we were, the heart of it all, you know, in all seriousness, was we really wanted to serve the customer.
Yep.
And we wanted to empower your organizations to thrive. And we wanted you to be focused on your mission because your mission's important. And if you think about it, associations and chambers across America and the world, really, but I tell my folks all the time at MemberClicks, you can't get up and get out of bed and drive into work without being, you know, touched in some sincere way through associations and chambers. From the roads you drive on, to the toothpaste that you use, to the shirts that you put on, all of it is being touched by associations and chambers across America. And that's powerful. And we take that seriously. So one of the things that we want you to know about MemberClicks, and when DJ and I decided it was a good idea for us to come together was, here's our values. Like this is what we actually use to operationalize delivering a shockingly refreshing software to you. And that's our number one, kind of numero uno value we start with is, everything we do has to be shockingly refreshing to you, to our vendor partners, to our employees. Everything that we do, we put under the lens of being shockingly refreshing. Like what can we do to exceed customer expectations? And we view everything that we do from operationalizing the organization to the decisions we make with regards to infrastructure. Combinations like this kind of go through that guide. And then, you know, the next thing we do is we take it personally. We really care deeply, a lot, about what we do on a day-in and day-out basis. And one of the things that became clear as DJ and I, you know, kind of grew our relationship and we started introducing other folks from the organization, by the way, we have like four eyeballs, you know, staring at us right now. You know, we realized, we do, all of us care a lot about what we're doing. And that's really neat to see. A lot of the folks that are on our team now at MemberClicks from the WebLink side have been, you know, at the organization for 10 years, 15 years, and they've worked in chambers and associations across America. And so they can kind of put themselves in your shoes, which is great. We strongly believe in, you know, collaboration. We don't believe you can accomplish anything alone, and you achieve everything through collaboration. We work really, really hard, but at the same time, we like to play hard. And so I think again, as, over a period of time, you'll start to see we really like to have fun internally, but also with our customers when we see them and embrace them. Autonomy is imperative here, so embrace it. That's one of those things that we live and die by because what we think is, as we surround ourselves with really talented people, smart, effective, and transparent people, let's set them free to make your experience better. And we totally saw that when we were kind of involved with the WebLink exploration. The next two are so important to me personally, and I know, you know, DJ shares these with me, which is, you've got to enable transparency. You can't just speak to it. It will, it does and will foster growth. But in order to enable transparency and be okay with that, you've got to be very forgiving as an organization. And so, you know, those are the values that drive MemberClicks every single day. And those were the, those were the values that kind of drew DJ and I together in terms of saying, mergers and acquisitions are tough, right? There's no getting around it. You know, it can cause fear and doubt in the customer base. It can create fear and doubt in your internal stakeholders. But the reason why a lot of them just aren't successful is because the cultures don't match and the values are not shared. I can categorically say, excuse me, that that's just not the case here. You know, we've been having a lot of the new folks into the MemberClicks family down at something we call Camp MemberClicks, which is just a cute way of saying, hey, we're bringing everybody together to learn about what our shared values are and talk about the synergies that we bring to the organization and how we can deliver that back to the customer. And at the end of the day, all, every day of the week, it's a customer-first mentality. It's why we come to work, it's to serve the customer, it's to deliver value to you and help you thrive and deliver your mission. So, you know, those are the components that really came together for me, and I think for DJ, to make this work, right? And so now, where do you go from there, right? So that's a lot of stuff. And, you know, it never goes as fast as you want it to. But our strategy is very, very simple, right? We know if we pour into our product and our customer service, it pours into you. And if we pour into you, you will go and sing our praises throughout your cohorts, right? And so what we're going to do is take a broad-based approach to investing in all the things that MemberClicks is touching now, which is the WebLink product line, the ePlay product line, and of course, the MemberClicks product line. That means the WebLink product line's not going away. We'll get to that in some of your questions. It's actually the opposite. Think about where MemberClicks is in the space. We like to, we typically work with smaller associations, smaller business trade associations. It would take us a long time to build out the technology tools that are absolutely necessary to serve that growing association, that growing trade association that gets into 10 to 15 to 20 to 25 staff. The WebLink product line is already there in terms of deepness, right? Like DJ said, what we want to invest in is how do we make that more consumable? How do we make it easier to use? How do we make it more digestible for all the admin users on the WebLink, you know, platform? And that's what we're going to do. We're going to spend a lot of time, effort, and energy talking to customers. So one of the things that DJ mentioned was, we have five product managers. You know, WebLink customers and MemberClicks customers have started to experience this a lot over the last six months, are going to get calls from those product managers because what we want to hear is feedback directly from you. Because we want to deliver a product that makes you more effective every single day. And that takes time, effort, and energy, of course, but we're already starting that process. We're integrating the engineering teams, we've integrated the product teams, our sales and marketing teams are already integrated. And then the customer support facets in terms of training, success, and experience, like your overall experience and onboarding, those are coming together as well. And so as we do that, we'll be investing every step of the way. We'll be growing our headcount, you know, in terms of the folks supporting you, the folks, you know, doing the research and development and delivering new products and features for you. And of course, we're going to be putting more effort and energy into things like the regional training because our MemberClicks customers have been really hungry for that. That's another example of something that WebLink really brought to the table for us, which is, you know, we have regional trainings, four to six, across the year, and we also have a summit. Love that. I love the idea of getting more in front of the customer and also just kind of being there and talking to the customer and being very intimate with all of you that have great ideas and needs and kind of requests for the product. The same thing for the MemberClicks customers. So I think it's going to be a great and awesome opportunity to cross-pollinate against your own cohort, you know, executive directors, membership coordinators, event coordinators, advocacy folks. You'll be in a place where you can have more folks to network with and leverage over a period of time. And we want to create that nation for you. So there's going to be a lot of investment over the next six to 12 months. Of course, there's a lot of moving parts to that. Sometimes we'll stub our toes, I'm sure. But if we do it right, we know that at the end of the day, we'll deliver a lot of value, way more than we are today collectively across the entity, and also for you and making your day-to-day life easier and more effective. So that's kind of a high-level view of what we really want to try and accomplish. At the end of the day, you know, we felt like it was just a great fit, which is obviously why you see the slide in front of you. And, you know, we think if we do it right, you know, we can actually create something that's really awesome. And I think that's where our focus is. Our focus is, is let's make sure that we do everything with a customer-first mentality. Let's live out those values that, you know, we showed earlier. Let's make sure we're delivering on our mission. And what we'll do is, is we'll create an awesome experience for you because those are the fundamentals. So I don't want you to worry. DJ doesn't want you to worry. Our entire MemberClicks family doesn't want you to worry, right? Sometimes that's natural in a process like this. And also, it's easy to say, don't worry, but the proof's in the pudding, right? So it's a marathon, not a sprint in scenarios like this. So give us time. Because I, you know, as we get out and we talk to customers and you meet me face-to-face, and DJ, we're going to do a roadshow to get out to customers and talk to you one-on-one. I think you'll see that we genuinely care about what we're trying to accomplish here. And we're really focused on what we know well. We're not trying to get outside of our, you know, strength zone, for lack of better terms. And so that's, that's why we're excited. And, you know, with that, what we want to do is just kind of turn it over to answer some of your questions. Now, some of those questions have been coming in. Some of them were sent in previously. We have some folks here who are going to read out the questions because I don't think you want to see me or DJ looking up at a screen, reading stuff. So without further ado, we're going to start answering some of your questions.
All right. One of the main questions that people have asked is, how will the WebLink platform change now?
Awesome. So I'm going to repeat the question just so everybody can hear it. It is, one of the questions that's coming back in different iterations is, how is the WebLink platform going to change? Real simple, we've kind of covered it already, is it's going to get easier to use. That's the first place we're going to start, right? It's kind of right off the bat, you can tell, a lot of functionality in the WebLink platform, lots of depth in terms of financial integrations, database schemas, reporting and querying. But there's a lot of features there that can get lost or cannot be approachable in a lot of different ways. And so how do you make a technology easier to use? Well, you start from the beginning. Make sure that we're selling to the right people, right? And so from a marketing perspective, we're going to make sure that we're honing in on your needs and attracting the right people. For those of you that are coming onboard with WebLink and MemberClicks, we want to make sure that we're actually implementing you the right way, right? The implementation's kind of the key to your overall success with any software implementation, right? And the next thing we're going to do is make sure that we're equipping our support and help folks and also the online knowledge bases, et cetera, to actually be effective in answering your questions, right? And then let's carry that forward on down the line. Our product team is now tasked with getting in front of the customer, asking lots of questions, doing lots of market research. And then the final component of that is delivering on the engineering, the features you're asking for, the usability, the user experience. Because user interface, yes, it looks prettier. User experience, it actually is easier to use, right? So those are kind of like, if you were to take a broad swath across the MemberClicks, you know, company, and where we're going to focus on the WebLink platform is, numero uno, let's start here. Let's make it easier to use and easier to digest and more consumable for you, the user, right? So I would tell you initially, that's where it's going to change. It's just going to get easier. And I think that's important because as you're training new users, you're onboarding new employees, or, you know, all the facets that come together with running your organization, let's make what you're trying to accomplish every day, registering events, paying dues, integrating with your financials, let's make it easier. Let's make it more consumable, let's make it digestible, so that you can run your organization more efficiently. Now, that's just the start, though. On down the line, you continue to make investments and you listen to the customer. And when you listen to the customer, you get great ideas for how you can continue to pour in to research and development and deliver feature sets and functionality. One of the things that DJ mentioned earlier was, he had smaller investors into the WebLink platform. They were great owners, but they were smaller in terms of what is available to them from a capacity perspective or capital perspective. MemberClicks is not burdened by that, which is great. We have two great financial partners. We have a lot of, so of those 3,000 customers, you know, almost 2,000 of those are ours. And so we have a very powerful engine, both from a capital perspective but also operational perspective, to help enact some of the things that DJ's been trying to accomplish at WebLink for the last two years. So that's what, long-winded answer to your question, but I think that's kind of what it's going to be, right?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's just going to, I use the word acceleration. I think our team's already feeling that, our engineers are feeling that. They're just like almost in tears because now they have the resources available, and the engineers, and I think just that the culture is so similar, it's just a very servant, you know, what can we do to help? How can we make this easier? How can we help you get to the destination faster so we can make a bigger impact? So I think, like Mark said, the proof's in the pudding. But I believe that you will see, measured in short order, in the next few months, you'll see, start to feel some positive impacts to the product and the service that we're already heading down.
Great.
Great. Next question. For those that are already MemberClicks customers, what additional benefits will we see with the WebLink integration? And will we need to be prepared for a price hike in the coming years?
Yeah. Da-da-da-da, da-da-da-da. You know, I always go back to our values. You know, I want to be shockingly refreshing, not shockingly punitive, right? At the end of the day. So here's what everybody needs to know across all platforms. There is no price increases coming, right? Just because we've come together, we're not taking an opportunity to say, well, now it's time to raise prices, right? So from a MemberClick standpoint, I think the great news here is, as organizations grow, and, you know, a lot of organizations make decisions upfront, and you've probably all been there from a decision tree perspective, is, I know there's technology tools out there, but there's big jumps in prices, right? Like, so the average MemberClick customer is paying $3,600 a year for a software, right? And then you could kind of keep going up from there. And then, but it's like this huge jump to something like IMS or Optify or some of the other tools that are out there in the marketplace where it's like $100,000 to implement. And so the gray in between is hard, right? And so some organizations either make a decision to say, hey, I don't have the money to spend today, you know, but I think MemberClicks can solve 70% of my needs. For those customers who that's the case, but as they grow, they now have an option to kind of upgrade into, right? Into a bigger, deeper solution. That one would increase, that would incur a price increase, though, by the way. But also for the MemberClick customer, we're going to learn so much, and we already are from ePlay, by the way. We're going to learn so much from our partners at WebLink and the WebLink team and the WebLink R&amp;D team. They do so much that we don't do in terms of really deep financial integrations, in terms of organizational structures and how they connect to each other relationally. We can glean some of that and incorporate that into the MemberClick solution over a period of time. So there's a mutual benefit here that creates a continuity across that zero-to-five, five-to-10, 10-to-15, 15-to-20 staff organization and up, that you'll have a product line that looks and feels the same over a period of time, has different strengths and weaknesses, and you'll be able to have a more selective opportunity that meets your needs more effectively. So that's what I, that's my view of kind of how it impacts the MemberClick customer. But MemberClick customers just know we're not increasing your prices.
And then same concern on the WebLink side, will WebLink fees go up?
Yeah, no. I can't say it enough, like, we're not raising your fees through this acquisition and coming together. There's just really no benefit in that. Now, I know there's probably a lot of chatter in the marketplace, and competitors are always going to take the opportunity to kind of pounce on situations like that. And they're going to do that, that's okay. But we're not raising prices on anybody.
One question we keep getting is, will the company be WebLink or MemberClicks? In other words, who acquired who, who is in charge, WebLink or not?
Well, Mark drew the short straw, so you see that.
Exactly, yeah. So great question, I'll repeat it. Who's who? Like, is MemberClicks the surviving company? Is WebLink the surviving company? Who's in charge? All great questions. You know, so MemberClicks is the surviving brand. So it's one company with three different solutions. The ePlay solution, the MemberClicks Pro solution, and then, of course, the WebLink Connect solution. So all of our teams are coming together, though. DJ's here, his entire executive team is complimenting our team. And so when we say who's in charge, I ask myself that every day. It's my wife, trust me.
Thanks to me.
Yeah, exactly. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, to his point, I drew the short straw. Mark, I am the CEO of MemberClicks, and so I'm going to guide the ship for all three of our teams moving forward. And I couldn't feel more honored and grateful and humbled by that fact. And also too, for all the WebLink customers, I am eager, so eager. I was down in Tampa Bay and we met the Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce, and, you know, there was 10 or 12 other customers there. And it was great to just meet those customers face-to-face so that you can see like, MemberClicks isn't the big bad wolf, you know? We're here to stay, we're going to serve the customer, and we're going to do everything within our power to make it better for you, so.
Yeah, and I think one thing I'd like to add to that, especially for the WebLink customers, is being Chief Strategy Officer at MemberClicks is awesome. I think one of the things that I love to do is actually get out there and meet people where they are, which is visiting with you, learning what your challenges are, and then bringing back to the table, here's how we can solve them. So I'm really looking forward to that and very, very excited for the future at MemberClicks.
Yeah, good.
Great. Next question. This was asked when you were talking about one company and three products. How does this affect existing customers? Would it be crossing?
Yeah, so I think, yeah, one of the, one of the real natural benefits of, you know, a company, like companies like this coming together is, how do you gain synergies across the technological platforms? That is going to be a really strategic area of focus for our organizations as we move forward. We've started going down that path a lot already with our ePlay partners, which is directly integrating that event registration tool into the MemberClicks platform, and then, of course, into the WebLink platform. And then there'll be other tools that we release over the next six months that can integrate to all three. And bridge gapping, like leveraging, you know, shared resources, whether that be technological resources, human resources, capital resources. That's the benefit of these types of relationships, right? When you come together, you've got to be able to leverage strengths and kind of augment your weaknesses. And I, we've definitely done that through this acquisition and merger. And so over a period of time, to answer your question, like, it can't be tomorrow, right? Like, trust me, nobody wants all these things to be in the play more than me and DJ and everybody else at MemberClicks. But you'll start to see over a period of time how these two technologies will start to kind of coalesce and come together. to kind of coalesce and come together, and we'll be able to, we'll be able to leverage, and you'll be able to leverage, kind of like, that continuity that comes across all three of those products. It's a great question.
So how will customer service change?
Well, so, you know, customer service is something that I'm incredibly passionate about. I know you feel the same way.
Absolutely.
One of the things I talk about a lot is, MemberClicks is actually the number one most publicly reviewed AMS on Google. And I can categorically tell you, like, we live and die by, every day, trying to be obsessive about providing a shocking and refreshing experience. So I think customer service will get more adaptive. I think it'll get deeper in terms of knowledge because now we're adding a lot more professional experience to the MemberClick staff in terms of association experience, chamber experience, nonprofit experience, because Web Link brings a lot of that to the table. I think by coming together, you can start to better leverage strengths in people to better serve the customer. And I definitely see that that process is already starting here, which is awesome. So I would tell you the customer service will improve. I think over a period of time, because, you know, we'll start to assimilate customer service tools to where you can leverage them effectively, which will create a better taxonomy, it'll create a better searching mechanism, it'll create a better experience across the board. You'll start to see that you'll have expanded customer service hours on the Web Link side to better serve our West Coast customers. By the way, ePlay's in Vancouver, so as we build out that office, we'll have way more coverage there. And as we continue to build out our technological infrastructure, because I think of customer experience across the whole continuum, like, the, the product has to give you a great customer experience. The people, when you call them, have to give you a great customer experience. When you get an email ticket responded to, that's got to create a great customer experience, right? When you go to read our blog, or go to a training, whatever it may be, it's all got to create a customer experience. And so we're working really hard to ensure that we're leveraging the strengths that each of us brings to the table to deliver a better experience for you. So, super passionate about that. Mark at memberclicks.com, give me all the feedback you want. I take it all the time because we will make sure that we deliver an awesome experience for you, the customer.
So three questions that are all very related to each other. Will MemberClicks host user group meetings? Will there be opportunities for hands-on, onsite training? And can we arrange for someone to come out and talk about the acquisition?
Good Lord, do you really want to be bored with that? So a couple of things. We are recording this, so that could be helpful for the third question. I'll just repeat them. A, can somebody come out and talk in person about this acquisition? So I, we're recording this, we're going to do a couple more town hall meetings, we're going to put more facts together for people to leverage to better understand how this is coming along. We're also going to start to put out a cadence on a quarterly basis of like continued communication to say, hey, here's how we're progressing with our relationship and the integration of the two teams, right? So why don't we, why don't I, why don't we reach out to you individually to kind of talk through your needs there? And I'm sure something can, some ground can be made there in terms of delivering on what you're requiring. The other two questions were, can you remind me again? I'm sorry.
User conference and training.
That's right. User conference and training.
Thank you, DJ. I know. I've had you already.
Training and weaknesses, man. And so the user conference is one of the things I love the most about Web Link. I like, this summit idea is just so awesome and something that I've longed for at MemberClicks for a long time. It's hard because our customers are a little bit more disparate, smaller budgets, you know, less P&amp;E, you know, line items for them to leverage to go to something like that. But I love regional trainings and I love the summit. So what you'll see is, is that these regional trainings and the summits will morph into kind of a MemberClick summit and training with specialized tracks for Web Link users and MemberClick users and ePlay users, less because they're, they're more internationally based. But in particular for MemberClicks and Web Link users, we want to pour into that process. We want to actually make those regional trainings deeper and more available. We want to make the summit, you know, it's already awesome, but we want to make it even better and bigger, bringing more value through speakers and, you know, collateral development and takeaways for the, the user experience. So I would tell you, that part of the business is only going to grow because that is an area where we get so much value just being face-to-face with the customer.
Amen.
Great question.
Next question. Will a conversion of some sort be required?
So the question is, is will a conversion of some sort be required? My initial response to that is no, because I don't want to convert anybody to anything, right? Unless you want to. So I'm not sure I understand the actual question itself, but, you know, Web Link customers, there's not going to be a conversion, right? Like, if, if in fact, the question is this, are you going to migrate to one platform or the other? The answer is no. Yeah. There's enough technology synergies amongst our two organizations from a complimentary perspective where it just doesn't make sense to retire either one of our products. We serve very specific nuanced pieces of a marketplace. And we like that, actually. It's one of the things that I think will make us more unique in the marketplace. It's a differentiator. And so you don't, you're not going to have to convert from, you know, MemberClicks to Web Link, or Web Link to MemberClicks, or, you know, anything to ePlay. You're, you're going to just stay where you are, and we're just going to make where you are better and easier.
Yeah, I think that's an important thing, too, because I think a lot of our competitors try to use scare tactics to say that, oh, Web Link's going to force you onto one platform or the MemberClicks platform. And that's not the case. I think a lot of things that technologically that we're going to leverage are frankly stuff under the hood. So you think about it, we'll have more buying power to be able to give you guys a better experience, whether it's sending email, which both products do. So under the hood, you won't notice anything except for performance and a better experience. So a lot of things like that are just going to be natural benefits of us coming together, but absolutely not going to force anybody onto one product or another.
Yeah.
All right. Next question. We've heard some concerns that the MemberClicks culture might change. How do you see that playing out?
So the question is, we've heard some concerns that the MemberClicks culture might be affected through our strategy. That's one of those things where it's like, A, the MemberClicks culture, mission, and values is how we operate our company, period. When you walk through our door, there's a mural with our values operationalized. We don't have them like placard out, we have them actually operationalized in an artistic way. The things that I've been talking about with the Web Link folks that are coming in for Camp MemberClicks is about, here's what your culture is all about, here's what your values are all about, here's how, here's the mission we're trying to accomplish. I would tell you, the MemberClicks culture only got better in the process, but I'm biased, of course. But I don't see, I don't see that as a viable fear.
Yeah, I would just re-echo that, is that, you know, the Web Link culture is just, it's like a parallel universe, and I think it's just going to get better and we're going to amplify it, and it's just so complimentary. And that was the number one thing that, that I think brought us together, was the relationship as I started at the beginning, is just those shared cultural values. And that's just so important to creating a company that is unique and better positioned to serve everybody in the market than anybody else.
And our shared dash and good looks.
That's true, yeah.
This question came in before the webinar. Chamber Master is promoting this acquisition as what I perceive to be a bad thing and refusing to leave Web Link. How do you respond to that?
So this is a great question, and I think it's an important one. So Chamber Master is positioning this as a bad thing, and that's how this person is perceiving it as well, this person that's asking the question. And they're asking me and DJ to respond to that. You know, I have three kids. Jake, 10, Ashen, 7, Kaia, 3. She's a terror, trust me. But, you know, one of the things that I always tell my kids is always take the high road, you know, and, and you can only, you can't control what people do to you, you can only control how you respond, right? One of our values is to be forgiving. The other one of our values is to be shockingly refreshing. We have zero desire to get into a war of words with any competitor, right? MemberClicks is committed to delivering the customer a better experience across the Web Link platform, the MemberClicks platform, and the ePlay platform. We take that incredibly seriously. And so we'll let our actions speak over time, and just know you're going to hear that chatter, not just from our friends at Chamber Master, but across the marketplace. You know, it's always an opportunity to pounce, and if you take that opportunity, great. We just don't believe in that, right? And we, we believe that our actions will speak for themselves, and we'll continue to live through our values of forgiveness and transparency and being shockingly refreshing. And that's just kind of how it works.
Yep, I agree.
I think we're going to take two more questions.
All right. There were some great new features, like the user interface, that were being looked at for Web Link. Is that still in the queue?
Oh, 100%. Yeah, that is, that is on steroids.
Crazy thing, yeah.
That is awesome. So we are already...
We're going 100 miles per hour.
Moving in that direction already. Now that thing is just boom.
Yeah.
So we're super excited to get that out. And you've already seen us, in the last years, make a tremendous amount of progress, and it's, for Web Link customers, if you haven't seen the MemberClicks product, the one thing that they do, they do many things very well, but they're just very blessed and gifted, we are now, at user interface, making things very intuitive and easy. And so we are exceedingly excited to be able to apply that to the Web Link product, so...
Yeah. The one thing we do well?
You do many things well.